There is a sign up sheet at the podium in the center of the room. And all the meeting to order, and everyone will please rise and say, "Pleasure, leaders."
We are the people of the United States of America, and we do a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a matter of housekeeping. Anyone who is wishing to speak, on the first go around, you'll be waited two minutes to talk to us. And then after everyone has spoken, had a chance to speak, you may return to the podium and finish your statements. We're happy that you're here and come out to speak to us today. We're here to listen to your concerns and help us understand how we're going to rectify a $6.54 million cut from the governor's budget this year. All right, anyone who's ready to come up and speak, would you please state your name and your address?
Good morning. You in, Janet?
No.
Maybe I'll just talk loud.
That's it's working.
I'm sorry?
It is working.
It is working.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Carol Waller. I live at 16 Raycon Street here in Trumbull. I've been a resident for over 43 years. Really good. Well, the first concern I have is the idea that was being put forward, that people should have to pay fees to use their dump, to use their renovation facilities. We pay for those facilities with your tax revenue. And I think it's just gross, psychedelic accounting to hide revenue outside of the tax no leave. I would like you to consider bringing those dollars of expected revenue back into what I believe is the proper place, and that is in the tax base. I don't think the impact our residents to have, I think the figure I heard was a million three, spread over the town of Trumbull. And in Illinois, I don't think there ever will be an impact. However, having to go and get a permit to dump, having to increase our garbage hauling fees to dump, and having to go and get a membership card to go to our own facilities, I believe is just wrong. And I wanted to share that with you. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Zimmerman. I live at 4672 Madison Avenue. I applaud your comments and your work. It's very difficult these days. This town has always been, in my view, in my opinion, pennywise and dollar foolish in some of the investments we've made over the years. My focus today is education. Dr. Choffey presented a beautiful diagram where things overlap in education. The thing I like to focus on is music. My children have gone through this school. I am a junior, and now I have a junior at the high school and a freshman in college who benefited incredibly from the music program. I applaud the idea of reducing pay to play music. I just this morning, real quick, did a Google on what's the benefits. And one of the quotes that I really like, and is pre-sounds in Dr. Choffey's presentation, is, "We value music as a critical learning tool that keeps students engaged in school, helps develop well-rounded individuals, and encourages skills that are vital for success in the 21st century." And I can tell you, my oldest, if he hadn't have found the RCA music program, I'm not sure where he would be today. Music is critical to our students, as well as all the other arts. Thank you.
Sure, actually.
Hi. My name is Kelly Malazi. I live at 39 Birch Street. And I absolutely agree with what everyone has said before me. I've only lived in Trumbull for a year and a half. I come from Illinois. And just a couple of things. So, we chose Trumbull to live here because it had great schools, and we do have great schools. I have two daughters that are in first grade at Middlebrook, and I have two sons who are at TECAC in the threes program. And I love our schools. What tends to bother me a little bit is when I look at the rankings of some of the other schools in the area that seem to be, for whatever reason, doing better than us, like in Roe and Fairfield, and even Glastonbury in that matter. So, I just want to kind of put my pitch in that I would love to see us invest more in schools, kind of be diverse in terms of our foreign language at the elementary level. And what else? And just be really thoughtful and listen to our citizens when it comes to things like, "Do we need a senior center? Should we rehab the one that we have?" And I also, just, no one's gonna like this, but where I come from in Illinois, our taxes are astronomically higher than they are here. So, I was actually shocked when I came here, and I have a house, and I still own my house in Illinois, that our taxes are, for a house that costs twice as much in Illinois, our taxes are like $3,000 higher. So, I know that everybody wants to keep taxes low, but we also want to be transparent about it. And I think transparency would be the word of the day. That we're just honest and thoughtful, and that we talk to the citizens, all the citizens, as many as we can, before we make great, big, giant decisions about infrastructure.
My name is Siobhan Livingston. I live at 15 Child Drive. Okay. I'm also new to Trumbull. I haven't lived here for a full year yet. One of the reasons I also moved here was because of the schools. And I see the cuts coming, and I am very concerned. I have a daughter, has a kindergarten in Daniel's Farm. I have a daughter in TECAC. Both have received special ed services. One is state mandated. The one in Daniel's Farm is what you now call early intervention, which is vulnerable to cuts, let's just put it that way. I started my career as a teacher. My husband is a Realtor. I now raise money for educational institutions. So, I see this from many different sides, as a mother, as a resident, as someone who wants to make a future here in Trumbull, and as someone who benefits from Trumbull being a competitive, attractive town amongst its peers here in Fairfield County and a bit with neighboring towns in New Haven County. I am concerned about the cuts. I will say straight up that I would happily pay more in my taxes as well to support the school system. I believe that investing in schools benefits our children. So, as a mother, I'm very happy. But also, I think it wards off other problems we can face when people talk about things like music, early intervention. All of these things are susceptible to cuts and vulnerable to cuts. And I think when we talk about things like drug problems in high school, competitiveness for children going to colleges and things like that, all of that really does come down to how much we invest in our children now and how much we support their individual strengths weaknesses throughout the public school system. In addition, my husband, as a Realtor, we often see people choosing towns other than Trumbull because of their schools and because of the services they offer. Only in one or two instances do they discuss the taxes and that they would actually choose another town because their taxes are higher. And that usually goes hand in hand with that school. They don't want to pay the increased taxes. So, I believe that the market, in terms of our homes and our homeownership and future revenue for the town, I think it can sustain a tax increase because the people that are moving here, we are still lower than other towns, and the services could also increase as well to make the market competitive. So, I think it makes sense, in the medium and the long term, for Trumbull to find a way to, at the very least, keep us up the status quo and finance $6 million, whether it be through a tax increase. I appreciate the very difficult position you are in, having to get blood from a stone, I suppose, and trying to find revenue where we have people who don't want to pay for it and have different opinions about where it should come from. So, I respect and value the work that you do, and I hope you do consider keeping the budget that you put forward, as accepted as it is. We're at the very least maintaining the status quo from last year so that we don't drop further in our competitiveness amongst our peers.
Would anyone else want to say something to the board?
My name is Renee Neiger. I live at 4797 Madison Avenue. I just also wanted to second everything that has been said so far, from not wanting to pay more to dump garbage, not wanting to have to pay for parks. My husband and I moved here 11 years ago. And we moved here, one, because of the great schools, but also because of the great parks. The Beach, oh, the Beaches School, the Toshville School, all of that is stuff that we love to use, and I feel that we pay more through our taxes. I also would not mind paying more in tax money to help support the great programs that we have. My daughter went through elementary school. She was hard, she got benefits from the TAG program. That was an excellent, excellent program for her. It really gave her the extra level that she needed to challenge her. Now, she's doing really, really well here at Madison Middle School. I have a son who's at Jane Rock. He also is doing really well there. I feel that we have great schools. And I feel now, when I first moved 11 years ago, I didn't feel like there were a lot of new people, new families, younger families, coming in with me. Now, I definitely do feel like I see a lot of new families coming in. And I do think that's because of our schools. I think our schools and our parks are what make this town great. And I think that's why people, young people around my age or even younger, are trying to come to this town. They really want to benefit from that. So, I would hate to see us start charging for those things that should really come through our taxes that we couldn't pay. Thanks.
Anyone else would like to address the board?
Morning. My name is Mike Millen. My wife Heather and I moved here.
Your chair, sir?
Yes, sir. For the 19th Route. My wife Heather and I moved here about almost three years ago now. That made that was statements specifically for the schools. It was also for affordability. Thought we'd get more money for our house. We're in a great location. My daughter Zoe is a first grader at Daniel's Farm. She's doing excellent. I think that's another part of the issue with schools. Although I will say, my wife and I both think that she could be challenged more. I think that the services offered at Daniel's Farm are great, but I think that to, again, add more of the statements here, we can do more with our school. We do more to challenge our students while not excluding other students who have special needs. As I looked at this budget, my wife went to Board of Education one night, and I looked at this, and I had half my mind to go through it, go through the line items, but that's not my job. That's your job. I guess the things that stuck out to me in here were, we're trying to do it and balance this by making small cuts across the board. There were increases in some areas here. But I guess my question to the board is, are all these cuts things you think are ultimately necessary? Or would you actually prefer to go back to the talent of the state to say, "No, we actually can't, no, we actually need to find ways to make more money so we can fund these programs here." It's interesting to me that, you know, we view our schools as so important, but we, you know, and it's such a big enterprise, and there are so many little things that you try to look through and then you say, "Okay, we cut this, we cut this, we cut this." And then you save, you know, one tenth of the budget, and then, but it adds up to much more than that. So, I guess my overwhelming thought for all this is that, yes, I would happily pay more taxes to make sure that we see schools as investment, not as an opportunity to cost. We see them as a way to make sure the town thrives, not as just a burden upon the town. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board?
Yeah, Carol Waller. Just one other point. When we pay our taxes, we get to deduct that from our other income taxes. When we pay fees for services that currently shouldn't be included in our taxes, we don't need them for them. So, I think that it's proof you do consider that when you're going through the budget. And look at the entire tax picture for your residents. I don't have children in school, but I want them to pay what it takes to produce a society of educated, healthy, happy students. And I think that should be every one's responsibility. We have children now. And so, I believe, I always have been willing to pay taxes for that. I think that's one of the biggest issues. I thank you all for being here on Saturday morning for all the difficulty we do.
Good morning. I'm Heather Yen, and I live at 59 Jackson Drive. And I sat for eight years up there, so I know how difficult it can be to craft a budget. But I believe that your job is to craft a budget that accurately reflects what it costs to live here. And in doing so, you need to get rid of some of the things that are in this budget. Number one, the garbage tax. Because it isn't a garbage tax. You've put a million dollars, the first election's the million dollars into the budget, the revenue side, for our recycling center. Put that million dollars, he says he's going to get from the garbage carts. Well, the garbage cart is going to get it from me and from you and from anybody else. And only half the people in the town, to my surprise, use a garbage cart. So, you are putting that million dollars on the back of half of the taxpayers in the town instead of spreading it among all the taxpayers in the town. If you need that revenue, then you should be taxing for that revenue. You know, maybe it isn't the time to put Samshe in the elementary school. Maybe it's not the time to add AP courses. I'm not sure. But I am sure that 32 take-home cars can be taken away since we're paying for them, paying for gas, paying for maintenance. There's 32 take-home cars, which is exactly the same number there was back in the 1990s. We were told we would be getting rid of take-home cars. It's a luxury. It's not a necessity for many of those people who have take-home cars. We're talking about, Stuart McCarthy mentioned, a membership card to use the pools in the parks. What a great idea. I have a membership card. It's my driver's license. I don't need to be charged additional. If you need the revenue, put it in the taxes. I can't deduct that membership fee to use the pools in the parks that I'm already using for free. Stop putting money in fees and accurately reflect what it's going to cost in tax dollars because it's unfair to whoever comes in next this first election to then have to bridge these budget gaps and throw more fees in. It's ridiculous. We're raising fees on recreation, fees on garbage, fees on programs. We're opening in sport, paying more. Those fees are not deductible. Taxes are. So, please, craft the budget in such a way. Do we need to move the Board of Education right now for $300,000 rental fee? We've been talking about moving the Board of Education since the 1990s. I spoke on that back in 1998. Move the Board of Education. Leave them where they are. Let's stop all this moving and shifting. $300,000 is the rental fee. It doesn't even discuss what's going to happen with the Long Hill building. Is the first election trying to sell it to raise more revenue? Do the neighbors know? Do they know what could be coming to that neighborhood in place of that building? That building needs to be demolished. I agree. But what's going to be there instead? Excuse me. That $300,000 isn't necessary. Put a hold on this community center until we know what's going to happen with Malloy's budget. I'm not in favor of this budget. It's the stupidest thing I've heard. But put a hold on that community center. We've spent above market value on those homes over there that are now sitting empty to build a community center that we don't even know what's going to be in it and we don't even know if people want it. We've been asked what we want in a community center. We've never been asked if we want a community center. Your job is to craft a budget that reflects what it costs to live in this town. Education and town services. Stop with the fees. Look at the take-home cars. Put a hold on the community center. And let's just do this bare minimum, what we need to get by. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tracy Gallow. I live at 65 East Longwood Lane Street. Like many parents, I'm running around this morning between sports, obviously the mind, and all these other activities that my children are at. So, I might briefly just try to speak on the half of all those busy parents who aren't here right now. It's not because they're not interested, because they're not present, because they're not following the budget process. They are. But obviously, you know, some of you are in the same situation with multiple directions. We're doing the best we can for our kids. So, thank you for taking the time this morning. And please fully support the Board of Education budget as it's been presented. It is lean. Again, there's not much room for new initiatives. As you know, it's mostly made up of contractual obligations. So, anything we can do to continue to move the district forward. I'm also concerned about what this is again, just mentioned, about the property on the street where Long Hill Administration has kindly relocated. I have about six houses from there, and I'm concerned about what the vision is for that if it's not going to be done with it. I don't know all the details about what needs to be done to that building or why we're moving it, but I would like to know more. So, I'm going to do my best to attend to community day Tuesday evening, depending on the weather. So, a lot of us are closely following that as well. So, I hope that you will too, with due diligence before we do anything prematurely or anything costly that maybe doesn't need to be done. And don't worry what would be in its place if the Long Hill Administration is no longer in that location. I would need to see it become super commercialized in the Long Hill section. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak this morning?
Good morning, Sahel. By the way, where is Elaine?
Elaine had a death in the family.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your husband's congressman.
Thank you to tell them. At the February 23 Board of Finance Public Hearing for the annual budget, Chairman Elaine Hammers reported that the state intends to remove $3.4 billion in form of an ECS grant and will send a bill to Trumbull for $3.1 million to contribute to teachers' pension fund. These two items combined will result in a $6.5 million shortfall in the town's revenue. Elaine has stated that if the town does not make any adjustments to the expense side of the budget, our taxes will increase by 6%. I certainly do understand why the town now feels under tremendous pressure to do something with the expense side of our proposed annual budget to account for this very significant reduction on the revenue side. However, I disagree with our town officials when they try to portray the state as being a bad guy who will either be responsible for a 6% increase in taxes or will be responsible for a drastic reduction of vital services in town. Our public officials must now learn to face and pump to grips with a situation where out-of-control spending at the town, state, and federal governments are creating serious problems. I will now attempt to provide my own insight as to why the state is right to propose what they're doing. With this state's request that the town should contribute to the annual required contribution, the R, to the teachers' pension fund, let me bring to your attention that the Trumbull currently contributes $5 billion towards the town workers' pension fund and $3 billion towards the police pension fund, for a total of $8 billion. So, my question to you people, the town officials, why is Trumbull reluctant to contribute to the teachers' retirement fund? Furthermore, you should be aware that Trumbull teachers currently contribute approximately 7% of their annual salary to the teachers' retirement fund. And the combined contribution of all teachers covers 1/3 of the amount for the R, the annual required contribution. The remaining 2/3 is covered by the state and the retirement fund's investment earnings. Since the teachers' retirement plan have a direct relationship to the highest three-years annual earnings of a teacher, and since the Board of Education negotiates with the teachers' bargaining unit for salary, and since the town council has the right to reject any teacher bargaining agreement, it only makes sense that the town should now start to contribute to the teachers' retirement plans. With regard to the state's removing $3.4 billion in the form of the ECS grant, I believe the state is justified to take this action in light of the recent Superior Court ruling on this matter. I also believe that this is the right thing to do when considering that our state's major cities are experiencing severe socio-economic problems in the education of public schools and students living in these cities. I expect this board to do the right thing. You have to cut the expense side budget. I've looked at the expense side, and I've found four areas that can easily remove $6.5 million. Yes, listening? Unfortunately, I will just introduce one. Because I expect you people to do, I don't expect to do what your job is. So, I'll just give you one example. Town's recycling center, commonly known as the solid waste transfer station, costs the town $2.1 million stoppage. This cost level is achieved only after the town recycles 30% of all solid wastes. You should be aware that the state will require all towns to increase their recycling to increase their recycling of solid waste to 60% of 30% to 60% by the year 2024. With Trumbull finally reaches the 60% recycling rate of all solid wastes, we will be able to save $1 million. I did find it very disturbing when the town, a few years ago, decided to terminate the employment of our recycling administrator. If we have kept that administrator, we would more likely have met the 60% recycling by now. We would have been able to save $1 million. That was a mistake to terminate this person. The other three, I'll let you people do. And I'll report that to the town council at the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. Hamer, it's always been a pleasure. And by the way, none of those reductions occur on the Board of Education side.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, I have a, an email that came in this morning. I'd like to read it to the record. It's from Laura Walden from 104 West Lake Road. Her letter says, "When Dr. Chaffee first presented the education budget for 2017, 2018, I was pleased. Pleased by the proposed new programs, including the one-to-one technology initiative in Spanish for fifth graders." I'll have a fifth grader next year, so this one was especially appealing. "When the Board of Education slightly reduced the request to a 3.5% increase, Dr. Chaffee explained that the proposed new programs would remain and that any cuts would not affect teaching and learning. The students would be unaware of any changes. I was reassured. When the first flatman reduced the Board of Education budget request by an additional $600,000, Dr. Chaffee again explained that any cuts made would not affect teaching and learning. I hoped that all of the proposed programs would remain, but I was still reassured. Then Governor Malloy's budget proposal was released, which included a plan to bill all municipalities in the state for 1/3 of the teachers' pension fund. And then I was concerned, very concerned. When Dr. Chaffee presented the Board of Education budget proposal to the Board of Finance, he explained that the impact of the governor's proposal could have a highly negative effect on our school system. When considering where he must cut, all aspects must remain on the table. School safety and security, student social and emotional development, pay to participate, technology, college and career readiness and curriculum and instruction, including class size, may all be adversely affected. I am very concerned. Yes, the education portion of the budget is larger than that of the town. No, not all residents have a child or children attending Trumbull Public Schools, but the quality of Trumbull's education system has a direct impact on every resident and the value of their home. I am not asking that you give the Board of Education a free pass. As much as I would like that, I know it is unreasonable given the proposed state budget. I am asking that you are fair and not ask the Board of Education to make a proportionally greater sacrifice than that of the rest of the town. Thank you. Anyone else last time?
Good morning. My name is Michelle Levine and I've been a resident in Trumbull for longer than I care to remember, probably since I, certainly since I was a kid and now I'm raising children in the school system. I have to tell you, it's been my experience so far, and I'm not typically somebody who wants to pay a lot of money in taxes, I'll admit that. I think our schools are running pretty lean, at least at the education level where our children are directly impacted. I do think perhaps that there's some opportunity to get a little bit leaner in the administration side of things. From what I understand, you know, our superintendent may have four secretaries and I think that those are things, if we're going to start looking at education budgets, I'd like to see administration cut before I'd like to see my children impacted. That's number one. Number two, you know, we recognize, I think, generally speaking, you all have a tough task ahead of you with a $6 million budget cut. So I'm not delusional to understand that that's got to be over somewhere. I would just ask that you're using the same discretion at all levels of the town. Additionally, right, so revenues come from, certainly come from tax revenues. There's also revenues from businesses within the town. And I think we have an empty Trumbull center, folks. I mean, there are store shop after store shop after store shop that's completely wasted down there. And there's like no business down there. Now, I recognize that you don't necessarily control it, but I believe you perhaps have some influence. So I would like to see revenues increasing from Trumbull Center businesses coming back in. I think that that would be perhaps a benefit. I was very surprised, actually, about the 32 cars. I was really shocked about that. So I think that there's perhaps some opportunity there to get a bit leaner. And I think, you know, again, being someone who typically likes to pay very little in taxes, if the net effect is going to be the same. So if I'm still going to have to pay X amount, whether it's in fees or if we call it taxes, I suppose I'd prefer to be on the books and increase. I can't even believe I'm saying this before I don't even do it. But after thinking about it, if I'm going to start paying more in fees and I could just do it on the books and maybe get a tax write-off from it, I'd rather do it on the books. So just my opinion and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for all you do, really appreciate your help.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay.
This is just something that's been occurring to me for a while. Again, where I come from in Illinois, like all the parks are open and everybody can go there regardless and they don't need to stick around their car. So I'm wondering, you know, if you want to go to the park in Fairfield, you can pay a fee to park your car there for the day. I'm wondering, have we ever considered allowing people from the neighboring towns to buy some sort of a pass that can use our parks? That's just something, I don't know how much money you could raise from it, but it's just an idea that I'd love for my friends that live in Monroe and Fairfield to be able to come to our parks. It's really hard to have friends that don't live in your town because they can't, it seems a little exclusionary. Because I think you can pay fees to go to Monroe and I know you can pay fees to go to Westport and stuff like that. So just an idea of trying to get, I mean, I guess the bottom line is creative about what are some other ways that we can provide services or generate revenue that maybe we haven't thought of before. So that's just one.
Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to address the board?
I just wanted to say one thing, that I feel like in Trumbull, you're very strong Republican. I feel like you're a very strong Republican, you're a very strong Democrat, you're a very strong independent. I feel like what you're hearing right now from all of us is that there are Democrats, there are Republicans. We all just want to find a way to make this town work. I'd like to see a little less fighting between the parties and more working together to try and make this town the best town that it can be. I'm saying that as a Democrat, but I'm here with my friends who are Republicans. So we can all get along and know that we have to care about the future of this town and the future of our children. So I'm asking that you also just keep that in mind and remember that we just need to keep the future of our children in mind and find a way to work together to give them the best that they can have. Thanks.
Hey, I want to thank you all for coming this morning and giving up your morning activities. We appreciate your input. And I will close the budget hearing at this time. Budget hearing is adjourned.